It being 7:00 PM, we're going to open the February 4th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. I want to read a statement. I just want to, I'll read the statement, then I'll see who's on. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may be, that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Halifax Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings as provided for in this order. I'm going to say that all votes will be taken by roll call. They need to make sure that everybody speaks clearly and that anyone from the audience recognized to speak must provide their name. Next thing, I'm going to ask that all board members that are present just speak their name or the recording secretary. Gordon Andrews?
Amy Eltrup.
Rick Mary.
Mark Milias.
Alan Diaz. So all members are present. Our first order of business is a bill for Amory Engineering in the amount of $492.50, which is the final inspection on the O'Reilly's Auto Parts. I'll be looking for a motion to pay that bill.
Make a motion to pay bill invoice number 15531 to Amory Engineers in the amount of $492.50.
Do I have a second?
Second, sir.
You have, you have a second?
Yep.
Okay. I'm going to take a roll call vote. I'm going to start with the screen. Gordon?
Yes.
Rick? Rick Mary?
Yes.
Yes. Amy?
Yes.
Mark Milias?
Yes.
Yes.
Alan Diaz, yes. Okay. We have a 7:10. I'm sorry?
Oh.
We have a 7:10 appointment.
I'm just having a little trouble with this.
Who is?
Matt, Rick is.
Rick, are you back with us?
Give the speaker.
Hello, am I?
Yes, you are.
All right.
Okay, we're okay. All right. We've got a 7:10 appointment a little bit early, so why don't we, we'll do some of our unfinished business from the 1/21, 1/21 meeting. Basically, we had some email correspondence on January 15th, January 19th. We had notices and letters from a budding towns regarding ZBA or planning board decisions. And then we had some public notices from some of Halifax Boards committees, Board of Health. Does anybody have any questions on those? I'm assuming everybody's read those?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any indication that we need to discuss them anymore? Hearing none. Let's go to our discussion items. First discussion item is 241 Franklin Street, the Asbilt. I don't know if any of the members get in to get a chance to take a look at them. We'll kind of pull them. Gordon, did you take a look at that?
Which one?
The 241 Franklin Street, the Solar Field.
Did that just come in this week?
No, it's been in there, but there's been a little confusion, and it has been in there. If you haven't looked at it, I'll just, let me just go. Amy, did you get a chance to look at it?
No, but I did see the email that it's not to scale as the original site plan that was approved and that it needs to be brought to the same scale to compare it.
Okay. Mark, you didn't get a chance to take a peek at it, did you?
No, I have all the paperwork for the last meetings. I'm flipping through now. Unless it came out recently, I don't think I have a copy of it.
The Asbilt has been in the office. I got a chance to, to look at it Tuesday when it was in there. And the scale on the Asbilt is 1 inch equals 100 feet, which is what the planning board's requirement is. But the original scale, it looks like from the plan, was 1 inch equals 150 feet. Maybe because it was such a large-scale project, I wasn't involved with the initial part of it. I know that in my time on the board, one of the issues we had were the trees. They seemed to be resolved. I checked with the building, the apartment. They're satisfied with the progress. The Conservation Commission has to review their portion of it because it was a wetlands crossing and so forth and so on. So, having said that, the Asbilt is to our scale. The original plan wasn't. So I'm just going to ask the board, based on that, that we just, if everybody's okay with approving that site plan, I'll need a motion to approve it. And then we can have some discussion, or you want to have some discussion first? It's up to the board.
No, I made it down, I made it down there and looked at it today. I didn't see anything, any issues with it at all. It looks okay to me.
Okay. Again, I look at it.
Did that just make it into this week?
No, it's actually been on our agenda and it's been.
Did that make it into this week?
No, I think it's been in the office. I actually.
It was in the last week. I didn't, I was, I was there last week. I didn't see it there. I looked at, O'Reilly's was in there, but I didn't see that one.
I found it in the folder. So if you were looking on the table, you wouldn't have found it.
Yeah. Yeah, I looked at the stuff that was on the table.
Yeah, that's what I did. And then when I saw that open, and it rang a bell, so I did take a peek at it, and I did leave it out for any other members that wanted to take a peek at it.
Yeah, I would like to take a look at it. I mean, I was on there when that one went through, so I'd like to compare that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd also have to take a look before I made any action on it.
Okay, so why don't we?
I also agree.
Okay, so why don't we hold off on taking any action on that? The next.
So that would, Alan?
Yes.
So that was on the desk in the, in where the folders are?
It's on the desk now. At least it was, I was in there Tuesday, and I left it on the desk.
Okay.
Rick, did you go in today?
Yeah, I went, well, I had Terry get it out for me. It was on the, it was on the, it wasn't on the big desk. It was on the, with a file, oh, there was like a filing thing there. I don't know. I'm not familiar with the office that much, so.
At the planning board desk?
Yeah.
On the end? Okay.
Yeah. Like I said, I had Terry, I had Terry get it for me. She knew where it was.
Okay, so Joanne, could you, you're on, Joanne, right?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so just make sure that that's left on the table.
Yeah, it was on, it was on the table the last three times I've been in. I don't know who moved it.
Yeah, it was in the folder when I was in on Tuesday, and then I left it out. So maybe somebody thought there was a mess and put it back. So, okay.
I was, I was there last night. No, it's been on the table. I don't know why, why it wasn't.
Okay. The only thing that I found on the table was the Bud's Good Plan. So somebody did put it away. So we'll just hold that over to our next, next agenda. O'Reilly's Auto Parts, there's a, there were some final items that needed to be completed. There was some damage. Amory Engineering went out. They reviewed it. They reviewed photographs, submitted. Amory is fine with the, the plan the way that it is. I'm hoping that the members got in and take a look at the Asbilt. And we also have a certification in from the engineer and the land surveyor indicating that the construction was done according to the plan. Is the board in a position to make any motions on signing off on that site plan?
I was in, took a look at it. I didn't see any issue with it. And as far as like the, the damage from the snowplow and stuff, I mean, that, that's kind of not our job as far as that minor part of it. I mean, when, when they do the job, it's done. And then, you know, I wouldn't hold it up a signature because, you know, a snowplow knocked a sign down, or, you know, there was some grass dug up. So I'd be fine with that.
Okay. Then I'd be looking for a motion, and then we can go into a discussion. Does anybody want to make a motion on the site plan for O'Reilly's 330 Plymouth Street to sign off on the site plan?
I'd make a motion to, to approve the site plan as built, as, as drawn.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. I'm going to move to a roll call vote. Start again. Gordon?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Alan, yes. Okay. Now being 7:10, we'll go to an appointment. This gentleman named Joshua from Liddell Brothers to discuss a preliminary site plan. Do we have a?
Mr. Chairman, could I say something?
Sure.
Uh, I'd probably have to recuse myself from this as a planning board member. Maybe if I have any comments as a, as a resident property owner, I don't know if that flies or what, how that works.
Okay, so Joanne, just note that for the record. I think we're, we're in a, we're in a situation where we're just look, he's going to give us some preliminary information. When it comes to a point where there's something in front of us, then just make sure that's duly noted for the record. And then again, you're more than welcome to make comments as a citizen, but you'd have to step down off the board from there. Do I have, or Charlie, is Joshua from Liddell's on?
I'm on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Jennifer Kiran.
That's, that's me.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, Josh, you have the floor. You identify yourself for the record?
Yep, my name is Joshua Liddell, and I work for Liddell Brothers.
Okay. Briefly, you can just give us an idea as to what you're doing. I know some plans came through. They did come through not to scale, so I didn't get a chance to look at them. I don't know that any of the members have, but you can tell us what your intentions are or what you guys are up to.
Yeah, I was able to send over some information. I don't know if it got over late yesterday. We did get a, a proposed fence plan per scale. Other than that, there's really no intent over there at the moment. There has been some activity over there, as you guys are aware. But the general use for the property is just basically going to be for, for storage. That's really all that it's going to be used for. There's, there's nothing major in the works going on over there right now. My uncle started as an opportunity and bought the property, and he's been just kind of doing some beautification stuff over there at this point. And that's really all that's going on right now. So there was some land clearing that we did out back. And now that the area is all leveled off, he would like to propose to put a fence in. Other than that, it's really just, like I said, going to be used for basic antique storage at the moment. That's it.
Just have a question as far as being clear on this. Is this the property that's up against the railroads? It was a woodworking facility or something?
Yes. Yep, 285 Home Street.
All right. Yeah, I do have the paperwork in front of me. Everything, everything looks good. I was just curious. Is there already a chain link fence that runs on the track side?
So there's a, there's a chain link fence that, it stops. The property is, it's pretty big, but the chain link fence actually stops pretty much on the side, you know, where the building actually stops. And then it was all just wooded area.
Okay, so maybe just 100 feet or so off of the road, and then chain link stops?
Yeah, about 130 feet off the road on both sides.
Okay.
Josh, just one, one question that I have. I understand that the, the building department issued a cease and desist, the sister order, based on, I'm not 100% sure, was it the land clearing, the earth removal, or whatever you were doing there?
Yeah, so Rob came down. I actually met him at the property and showed him everything that was going on. Basically, the heat was not working at the building, so my uncle hired North Star Mechanical to come over to do a switch over, and they didn't get a permit. So they do have a permit now, and that was where the cease and desist came in. He didn't tell us we could stop doing, you know, everything, but we just, just to, out of respect, we stopped and kind of paused everything. And right now, we're not doing anything over there until we go through any formal permitting processes. So that's where we're at right now.
Okay. It just sounds to me that if you are, if you do have something planned there, that you have to submit a site plan. Is that your intent?
Um, right now, he, he, he sent over a small statement. I don't know if you got, did you guys get that or no?
I don't, I don't know.
I do have something with a sketch of what's proposed right now. Right now, it looks like you just proposed in the fence, which really isn't an issue. The only comments I would make on that is I would recommend to keep it inset into the property far enough for maintenance, whether it be 2 feet or 3 feet, which would just be a recommendation. But other than that, there's probably no issue with what's proposed at the moment.
Okay. I know that in his write-up that he sent over, there is a, an existing foundation on the back of the building that I believe that was going to be used for a future addition. He has been looking into putting an addition on there, but obviously, if that, you know, the, will be a permit, I think it's spaced metal buildings, we'll go down and pull a permit if, if that, if he does go through with that. But that's, at the, at the moment, that's really all that's, that's going to be going on over there. Maybe in the spring, he would like to do some landscaping and possibly pave, but we know that we have to get a site plan for that.
Did I disconnect?
I hear you.
Oh, you hear me? Okay. Somebody put something on the screen, so my screen.
Yeah.
It's a letter.
I'm sharing it so that people can see the letter from Liddell.
What happened is when you shared it, it eliminated everybody. You have to do what?
That'll get every, be careful.
Can you hear me, Amy? Can you take that down? Oh, boy. Okay, now we have it. So you're here tonight. My understanding is you dealt a bunch of land clearing, and then you created a parking area. So I guess, I guess my biggest question is putting up a fence is not an issue, but if you clear the area and you're going to make a parking lot, then that, that is kind of an issue. So you're going to have to really tell us what you're doing. If you're going to do some parking or anything like that, then you're going to have to file for a site plan.
Oh, that, that, that's exactly what I said. It's, it's not for parking equipment or anything like that. It's, it would just be to, because right now, the, you know, the, it's just not really, he's trying to beautify the place, to be honest with you. So it's, it's just gravel right now. But we understand that if he does go through with doing any sort of paving, that he would have to get a site plan 100% for drainage and, and all that. So, but that's, obviously, that, when that time comes, we're going to go and pull a permit for all that.
Sounds good.
Any other board members got any questions?
I would say that, you know, for, for fence, there's no issue before the planning board. If, you know, you want to propose something beyond that, then, then that would be a time to come back. That's all.
Okay.
Mark, we heard from you. Amy, did you have any comments?
You had a cease and desist. You said North Star was there. Were they replacing the heating system or repairing it?
They were doing a, just a changeover. What's there wasn't working. And he didn't think that he had to pull a permit. So he was told that he's not doing any, he couldn't do any more work there until he went down and filed for the proper paperwork, which he did.
Okay, so he was replacing the old system that didn't work with a new one?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, now that the board members have, have spoken, is there any member in the audience that has any questions or concerns about the, the work that's been done to date? Rick, you said you're, you're in a bud. Can you?
Well, I have a lot of questions, sure. I mean, I've been watching the whole thing go on for months that they've been working there. You know, I'm speaking as a bud. I'm not a direct bud. I'm across the tracks. So actually, it probably affects me more than anybody in town. When you come right down, we look out my front door, and all you see is a Q-PAC parking lot that they built. And as far as just doing heat in the building, they've been working on that building for months. The sheet rock and put an overhead door on the side. They've put a leach and pit up front. I don't know what for. They've done a lot of stuff there, more than just fixing the heat. So I don't know that. I mean, I haven't been in the building myself, but I see it every day. So, you know, I should, you know, I don't, I don't believe what's going on as far as what you're saying.
Well, as, as far as someone having the right to beautify their property, that goes without saying. From our standpoint, it looks like he's just asking us for a fence.
Okay. Rick, just for, for the audience sake, you said Q-PAC. What do you mean?
Well, it's just the stuff land sells. It's a mix of, you know, recycled asphalt, concrete, you clay, you name it. Anything that they want to get rid of, they mix that up and make it into gravel. So, you know, they had, they spent, you know, weeks in there doing that. You know, my house shook for about a week while they compacted it all. You know, as far as I'm concerned, it didn't make the place beautiful by any means. I liked it better when it was all woods. So now you got, look like over a two-acre parking lot, just running right down to the street or into the tracks or whatever. You know, it's not really curable material, not Q-PAC, especially when it has as much slope as it has on it. So anyway, that's, you know, like I said, that's what, that's not what he's here for right now. You know, they did a lot more work in the building than fix the heat. Because I've just, you know, I've been, I've been slow with work, so I've been home every day watching the whole thing right across the tracks, so.
Joshua, could you comment on that, this, the Q-PAC stuff? And how big a area did you clear?
If you, if you drive bio back, it's probably, it was, it was, the, the, the property goes back a couple hundred feet from where the building stops. And that area was heavily wooded, and he basically just did the land clearing there and just kind of leveled it off. You know, we put, we did put, because we changed some of the elevations, we did put some temporary drainage in just in case, but we know that we can't do anything. He's not going to put, and I know Rick's concern is he, it's, 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 looks like it's a big parking lot, which that's not, it's not, he doesn't plan on putting anything there. I know for him, you know, the land, it's a nice piece of land, and it's, you know, we have, we're obviously a construction company. So, you know, when he does something, like he, he wanted to, he had a vision that he, when he bought the property, and that's what he wanted it to look like. And I would say that the, to him, I guess, in his eyes, the, the area is worth more to him the way that it is, you know, now. But he does, he knows that he can't build or put anything on that property without, you know, sitting in front of the planning board and talking about what he wants to do. There's going to be no business run out of there. And I know there was a lot of concern when, I power washed that thing when he first, when he first bought it. And there was a lot of people that stopped by and asked if we had purchased it. And what, you know, we're excited that there wasn't going to be, you know, a, you know, a pot shop or like any sort of weird business going on over there. And that's basically, it's still the same. I mean, that's, that's what's, what's going on, is if you look in the windows, it's, it's really just storage. And, you know, the, the windows were all smashed. Everything was, was, I mean, the inside was, it was pretty gross. So it is, it has been cleaned up. It's painted. There was a mine, you know, a little bit of sheet rock was, there was sheet rock in there. Some sheet rock was fixed and painted. And, you know, Rob walked around the whole outside and inside. I showed him everything that was going on. And, you know, out of respect for the town, my uncle stopped everything until we had the meeting in case there was any questions or any concerns. And that's what I'm here for now. And if there's anything else that's ever going to go on there, there's no plans for that now. He's, he, you know, when, when he gets involved in doing something, he likes to do things, you know, he likes to make things look nice. And he was trying to make it, I, I, maybe, Rick, you don't think so, and I apologize, I mean, on, on his behalf, that we didn't come in earlier and, and go through what he wanted to do. So that, that was an oversight and a mistake because he thought that he could do that. And you know what? Out of respect for everybody, he stopped. And that's what I'm doing here now.
Okay, just for the record, you keep saying he, he. Who is, who is he?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not the owner of the, it's, it's my uncle Gary Liddell. He owns Liddell Brothers, and he's the one that brought the property.
Okay, all right. So you've indicated, at least to our board, that there's not going to be, well, first of all, whatever the cease and desist was beyond just the oil burner, you did, you did all the things, but that's not under our purview. The fence, again, as Mark said, that's not under our purview, as long as, if, when you come back in for a site plan, then, you know, it might be some potential screening that might, that might need to be done. I'm not really sure, because you haven't really presented it to us. But you're assuring us that there's not going to be any gravel removal or any future activities until you come back to at least whichever applicable board?
That's right.
Okay. Any, any other board members or anybody else from the audience have any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll move on. Joshua, thank you very much for your attendance. And this is on the record, so we expect that you won't do anything until you come back and see somebody.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Yep, good luck.
Thank you.
I think we'll go to, I think I'll stay with the discussion just for a few more minutes. We'll finish that, that section. Okay, we did the O'Reilly's. We're okay with that. There was another email that come in and showed some plans for drainage. And I'm really not clear. It's, it's item number three of William McNeese, Podersky Corp. Now, our agenda says a proposed strip mall. And I'm not really clear on what Podersky Corp is trying to do other than put some drainage in for the roof. Joanne, I don't know if we got any clarification on that, or is someone from the Podersky Corp with us tonight?
The building department told me it was going to be a small strip mall. I think we talked about that the other day.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what, and that's from William McNeese. I put those emails in there.
Right. The, the property, just so everybody knows, is 300 Plymouth Street, which was the old Hawaii Gardens and where the Verizon.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Storage.
Yeah, I'm not sure if anybody is there for, for that tonight. I don't see any name that, you know, corresponds to that.
Okay.
That's attending.
Yeah, we don't have, why they submitted drainage plans, I really have no idea. If they're proposing a strip mall, that corner's quite full. Maybe they're going to tear something out. I think if they're looking at drainage, that might be a stormwater management issue. They should probably go to conservation, unless some, one of the other board members have a different idea. But there's really nothing in front of us to either allow or, or to even discuss some drainage, roof drains, unless I'm missing something. So I'll, I'll give it out to the board to see if anybody's going to comment.
I agree. The only thing that, the title is proposed improvements, but without more information, there's nothing really to go on.
Gordon, you were going to say something?
Yeah, so they want to, they want to change the site plan to change something there?
We're not really sure. I think all the boards got a plan that shows proposed drainage. Oh, wait a minute. I see something on the.
I have any Zoom change. So I guess we're looking.
There's something on it about Brian Podersky. Is there a Brian Podersky that's with us tonight?
Yes, there is.
There is. Okay, Mr. Podersky, are you the proponent on the 300 Plymouth Street? are you the proponent on the 300 Plymouth Street drainage plan?
Nope, but my father is, I think.
No, no. This is Joe, this is Joe Podersky, senior. With you, sir.
Okay. So are you the proponent of this drainage plan in a proposed?
A proponent to, I'm not sure I'm involved with anything, sir.
Okay, what we have in front of us, there was, in, in my agenda, it says William, William McNeese slash Podersky Corporation.
Look, that's not us.
300 Plymouth Street, discussion on drainage plans and a proposed small strip mall.
Okay, no, Podersky Corporation is one of my cousins from Canton and William McNeese is one of their estimators.
Okay, so it's got nothing to do with you?
Nothing.
No, sir.
Okay, all right, so.
Do you need those people to be talking to or?
We, we're not sure. We, we, we've got a set of plans and nobody really knows what they're doing. And we, so we don't have any other applications in front of us. So I think at this point, unless the board chooses otherwise, we'll just go on to our next matter because we have no proposal or anything.
I mean, it looks like a pretty big drainage field that they propose in there, right in the middle of the parking lot, right?
That's what I saw. It looks like they've got two.
Or three.
Is that the existing leaching field up front they're showing out there? Because it has septic tanks going into it. Then it has a couple, it looks like building drains on each side. That's what they're proposing by the looks of it.
You, you're correct. And when it came to the Board of Health, we asked them to put, there is another septic system in that facility. It's out back. So we asked them to put that on, but we, we still don't know what they're proposing. So I guess without some clarification, anything to do with drainage or stormwater management would, I think is under the purview of conservation unless there's going to be some site changes and they'd have to come in and get their site plan modified. Does everybody agree?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so we will go on to our next item. Unless anybody from the audience has any comments on that? Hearing none. Next item on our, in our discussion is site plan and special permit guidance meeting with attorney, attorney Amy Quessel. What we're kind of proposing is we've got some pretty big projects that are coming before us. And some of the newer members will need some guidance and some information on just how we're supposed to act on those, what we need to do. So what we're kind of proposing is either a one hour or a half hour session, possibly our next meeting, pretty much for the Q and A, hopefully with attorney Quessel. And to go over the actual process for both our site plans and our special permits. Is, does anybody have any objections to that? And would starting the meeting half an hour early, our next meeting, an issue? I'm not looking for any motions. I'm just looking for some feedback. Gordon, can I start with you because you're at the top of the screen?
Starting a half an hour early on, which, which day is it?
It would be our next meeting. Joanne Bael is out. Is it the 17th? I don't have it.
Yeah, 17.
It's the 18th.
18. That might be tough for me. I, I know I can do the seven, but I'm not sure about 6:30.
Okay, anybody else, any?
Other, other than that, I would say it's a great idea to have it. And definitely, you know, get some questions answered if anybody has them.
Okay, I'm, I'm, what I'm hoping is that she'll, we can get some reading materials prior on the whole process, how it's done throughout the whole state and our bylaws. And then having, having everybody read that, you might have some questions on that and we can share it and hopefully we can learn something from it. Any problem with your schedule, Amy, at this point?
Nope, not at this point.
Rick?
No, it sounds good to me. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, Mark?
Oh, sounds good.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll notify attorney Quessel on that. My next item is 311, 313 Plymouth Street. We just got a 90 day extension for that site plan. My next item is Bud's Goods Marijuana Establishment. The, there are plans in the office for all the board members to look at. Plans that are very large scale.
I gave them to everybody in their folders as well.
Yeah, I believe I have a copy.
Plan?
Yep.
I'm talking about the full size plan.
The full size plan, yeah.
I got a full size.
Okay, everybody's got a full size plan. It, it's quite overwhelming. The first item that I want to discuss is that I asked the, our review engineer, Pat Brennan, to give us an estimate on what it's going to cost to review their site plan. He did give us an estimate and then I sent him something back that, because we don't know what the public is going to say, that we might have some issues with, with questions on odor mitigation, fertilizers, drainage. I know that area is very difficult for, for drainage, being a farm. So he did send us another review estimate. So what I'm going to be looking for is, is a motion, first part of this conversation, to ask Bud's Good for a $5,000 retainer or put $5,000 in the account to review the plan. I think our estimate is $4600 or $4700, somewhere in that vicinity.
Can I bring something in?
Sure.
Right now, I think the other thing that we need to do is we need to reach out to a couple more engineers and get some prices for reviewing so that we don't just have one engineer. Then we can bounce those quotes out there. Typically, that's what we've done in the past so that we have a couple of different ones. Because sometimes as things get a little bit busy, you know, one of them might get busy and not be able to handle it too. And it's kind of nice to see what that price difference is.
Okay, do we have any names of any other reviewings, review engineers?
We've used, we've used Merrill in the past. We've used PMP. We've used.
Silva.
What was it?
Silva.
Yeah, Silva.
Silva's the proponent on this one, so that, that's not going to work.
No, no, I'm, I'm not saying for this one.
Yeah, okay.
But I'm saying so that we have some other engineers to, to work from. I'm not suggesting that we don't use them on this one.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm saying that we need to reach out because we have to get bids. Typically, we can't just pick it. We're supposed to have bids. And so we should have more than one to pick from. That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Every, every other, in the past, every year, we would reach out and ask the guys that we've been using to send us in proposals for the year.
Okay.
So it's just something, something I think we need to, to, to strive to get some more engineers.
Okay, I, I personally don't have a problem with that. We are, this application has been filed, so it's, it's up to the board. I think no matter who does it, one first order of business is to, to take a vote on the money so that we have the money there. Because what I've seen in the past is that we've gotten money in and then not enough for the ASBIL. Then we're sending out emails to send more money back in so, so, so far. So what I like to do is have enough to cover. So if you'd like to do that, we'll make a motion to get that money in. And then if we have some other names, then I would ask that Joanne send them out, whether it be Merrill or, I, I don't know of any other review engineers that would, can handle this. But if you've got some names, I, I don't have a problem with that. Have any other board members got a name?
Yeah, that's fine. Typically, what we've done with the revolving account is we tell them that this is going out to review. We don't make them put up all of the money upfront, but as that money goes out, then they need to reimburse it. So it's not like we got to say to them, you know, you got to put up 10 grand now or five grand now. If the review engineer is going to take this and the money's going to go out, he's going to get two grand the first time. Then we ask them to put three grand in there. When that two grand goes out, then we ask them to replenish. That's what the revolving account is set up for.
Okay.
Get some names from the building department.
Okay, so, so Joanne can get some names on the building department. I'm just trying to cut one of the steps off as far as, I mean, it takes probably half a dozen emails back and forth when that account gets low and then we have to, you have to send it out. So it's whatever the board decides.
Yeah, I just, I'd hate to see us put a, a demand to post a, a large amount at the beginning where we've never really had an issue with the revolving accounts.
We, we have one estimate right now of the $4600 or $4700.
For the initial?
By me?
That's for the, for the initial?
No. I asked him to do an estimate to take it from beginning to end, including ASBILs. I asked him to add in any potential odor mitigation problems or any, any reviews or anything he needed to do, any air quality systems, anything potentially fertilizers in the event that, you know, any of the neighbors are, have any issues with whatever type of fertilizer they use for that stuff. But more so with the, with the odor. I think that's a very extensive process in trying to clean up that odor. But we just, I just want to be prepared for that. So that's, come up with that figure.
I don't see how it's proper to ask them to prepay for the ASBILs and things that are so, so much further down the line for the project. I, I wouldn't be comfortable with asking for all the money for that upfront.
Okay, you have a number that you want to ask them to submit?
Well, he gave us a proposal. What'd he say for the, for the initial?
Plan review.
The initial review.
Joanne, do you have that available? Because I don't.
I mean, did we get a copy of it?
Yeah, it should have been in the, in, let me see if it's numbered. Might be numbered here.
I didn't see a quote in here.
The 21?
Oh, yep, 21.
Yeah, that would be this, this, the second quote, plan review. All right, so let's do this. The construction phase, he's got a review phase here, which, I don't have a calculator. And then there's a construction phase, which is $148, $296, and $32, which would be the ASBIL portion of that. So having said that, you might have $500 there in the ASBIL portion.
He's $4,600 for the whole thing. I mean, have him put up 2,500. We go through that. Then have him put up another two grand, 2,500, you know?
Sounds reasonable.
Okay.
Do I have that most, any more discussion? I'll look for a motion?
Yeah, I don't know if we need a motion.
I believe we do need a motion in order to
Set the price?
The money.
We could, we could do a motion to, to have him fund the revolving account, but we don't have to put the dollar amount in it because we actually don't know what the end dollar amount is going to be. I mean, that's a proposal.
Yeah, but do we, do we need in our motion, how much we're going to request for Bud's Good? I mean, if, if there's no dollar amount in the motion, they could send us a hundred bucks.
Yeah, but that's fine because as, if the first bill that comes in that is in excess of that first hundred dollars, we let them know that they need more money. That way they're not, we, we don't need that account to hold all of the cash because a, as they run through it, we ask for more and they replenish it.
Okay, is, is that, if, if that's been past practice, I'm, I'm fine, just.
And then we just say, you know, based on what we've got for a proposal here, looks like you should put $2,500 in it. The, you know, and we tell them what, you know, if we get a proposal, what it is so that they're prepared for what that is. You know, it looks like the total thing is going to be $4,600. We're going to need the money as we go. You put $2,500 in for the initial and as that money goes out, we're going to need you to replenish it.
Okay, so you want to make that motion, Gordon?
That's fine. We'll make it.
Okay, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we're going to go to a roll call vote. No more discussion. We'll go to a roll call. Gordon?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Amy?
Yep.
Mark?
Yes.
Alan, yes. So we're going to ask Bud's Good to provide us with $2,500 check for the revolving account. Okay. We also do have, in Bud's Goods conversation, I asked them for a waiver on our section 167 dash 28, which is the 45 days, which I believe they have complied with. Am I, am I okay with that, Joanne?
Yes, that's on page 20.
Page 20, okay. The next, the next part of this is, and I don't know, whatever the board decides. This is a massive project and I think before we begin it, I think I'd like to have a site visit if that's okay with the board. And, and this is massive. And it, it looks like from the plan that they want to subdivide a portion of it off. I, to this day, have no idea where it is. So if members of the board are so inclined, maybe we can set up a couple of dates or get a dates from them that we can maybe just take a quick walk through to see where they're proposing, see, you know, how far it is. It appears not to be anywhere near any neighbors, but I know that I would like to go out and see just how far from any residents there is and where that project is. Is anybody else so inclined to want to go out there?
I would love to.
Okay.
Yeah, sure. I'll go out.
Okay, so Joanne, oops, I'm sorry.
That's fine, yeah.
Joanne, could I ask that, that you reach out to the applicant and get some possible dates, share that with all of the board members and see if we can pick a date for a site visit? I don't think we really need to post it as a meeting. We're really not going to do any discussing. We're just going to take a look. I think that's appropriate.
Just a quick question. Do you know if there's any sort of markings? Are you going to ask them for, you know, approximate staking of the building so we can see it?
Great idea.
Joanne? Just include that. Just include that if, if anything has been staked out or at least have someone there that's going to show us where, you know, the, the, the building is. The, it looks like there's three or four greenhouses. I think there's like four, three greenhouses or a big building and another, another building. So if that's possible, sure, now and prior to our meeting?
Yes.
Then you can get back to us.
Before the 10th or before the 4th? Do you mean before the meeting for Bud's Good, Alan?
Yes, yes.
Okay. That would be, that would be good because before the next meeting might be a little tight.
Okay, well, let's just see what happens. And if, yeah, they might not be able to get a stake, but let's, let's see what happens, see how that plays out. We'll continue on with our discussion items. Autumn Lane, I do not have a status on that. That's.
Alan?
Yes.
Can I ask one more question on the Bud's Goods before we move on? I was going to ask where in our paperwork is the extension on site plan review?
I think she said 28.
Thank you, I couldn't find it.
It's page number 20 if you're looking for the, the letter, I believe.
Thank you, Mark. I didn't hear what you were asking for. I'm sorry.
That's okay, Joanne.
No, it can't be page 20.
Well, as far as the ones that Joanne mocked up, I believe that's what she was referring to.
Right, but Joanne mocked 20. 20 is the proposal from Pat Brennan.
Oh, I have, mine is mocked, number 20 is the Bud's Goods.
There's no extension for them.
I thought that's what we just asked. Okay, hold on, let me just see.
That's why I was asking where it was because I didn't see that. And thank you, Joanne, if there's not, we'll just take care of the extension at their first meeting. You know what I mean?
Well, when does their time start?
With this time, it doesn't, we need an extension fairly quick because if you look at the timeline, the, we're going to be somewhere around 35 or 40 days, I believe, from the time they file to our first meeting.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. What was the file day?
Um, I, I don't, I don't, I don't have the file date, so.
January twenty-eighth.
Okay, so I, I'm, I'm inclined to ask her, and, and I thought we did have one, to ask them for an extension. But I believe that I saw something in one of the emails from Sarah Sterns that she agreed.
We should probably have the document, though, like we made, um, three eleven, three thirteen.
That's fine.
He said we just want to let her know what the board wants.
Yeah.
Why don't we send her out, um, a formal extension form that she can fill out that we can sign on the eighteenth?
For how long did you want to do that? I'm sorry, how long did you want that for? How long will the extension be for?
What does everybody think?
Ninety, ninety days should be sufficient. That, that'll get us into, um, that'll get us more than enough time, a couple of meetings. I mean, this might be three or four meetings, depending upon how much public input and any questions we have. So ninety days, I think would be sufficient.
And they're also gonna go to conservation?
I'm sorry, I've got two people talking. Go ahead, Gordon, say that again.
Are they also going to conservation?
They, in one of the emails, they said they are gonna be filing with conservation. They wanted to go through site plan first.
Okay.
So the ninety days on top of, um, the already forty-five, because we'll be at thirty-five days on March fourth. So do you mean ninety days past the fifteenth, um, the fourteenth of March? Gee, is that what you mean?
Um, good point. Joanne, typically when you do that, you're gonna get ninety days from the date they sign it or ninety days from the date of our first hearing?
Um, you know, I'm not sure, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Why, why don't we just, why don't we pick a date? If anybody's got a calendar, ninety days from March, uh, fourth. Or, or Joanne, you can, you can just.
It usually goes, it usually goes from the date.
I believe it's on top of the forty-five, but I'll have to double check.
So that would be March fourteenth, so then you'd have sixteen, forty-six. Thirty-one is forty-seven, seventy-seven. Plus thirteen, so it would be like June thirteenth?
You know what you can do is if it's March fourteenth? You can have them sign it at our next meeting. You know what I mean? Cause then, then they'd have a feeling for how long that they'd be looking, rather than just pick, you know, say ninety days out there. Um, because as we start to go through it, if we need more time, you know, they, they're gonna give us an extension. They don't want us to vote it down.
Okay, so why don't we?
As long as, as long as we go beyond our next meeting, we should be fine.
Whatever days we use, uh, Joanne, whatever days we use, trying to make sure that it's one day after one of our meetings. So that if we need an extension for some reason at the last meeting, um, then they have the next day to put it in. Does that sound reasonable?
Or, or if you can, the Monday after, because Joanne doesn't work on Fridays.
Monday after is fine.
Right.
Okay, so you'll send that out to them. Okay, anything else on Bud's Goods?
No.
Hearing none. Uh, on a lane, I don't have any status. Uh, it just seems that this guy contacts the engineer and nobody hears from him. Past Elaine, I do not have a status. I can just update that we are talking with the proposed developer. Um, and hopefully I'll have something for the board at the next meeting. It's just been, been real busy, so, um, I do not have an update as far as that.
I, I did speak with John Parkett.
You did?
And, um, he had a, what, what's happened now is that they have a real concern that they've gone, they've gone this far to get the building permit and then they, they were told to get their perk test and do all that, get that done. And then they went in to file for the building permit and then the building inspector said, no, you can't get the building permit. So then they started to pull back and they were upset and I talked to him and I said, the reason you can't get your building permit is because the planning board has a covenant on that lot. And the building, the planning board's not gonna release the covenant until the road is done. And he said, oh, he said, nobody explained that. So the reason things kind of stopped over there again is because they thought that they would not be able to build on the lot. So when I talked to him, I said, he said he definitely wants to get the thing going. I said, you need to come in, talk to the planning board. He said, I'd rather do a bond. And I said, well, we, we can't deny you if you did a bond, but here's the thing. We have all the residents over there that have heard time after time that this project is gonna get done, this guy's gonna do it, that guy's gonna do it, and absolutely nothing has happened. I said, so it's gonna put the board in an awful position to go to them and say, you know, we want to put up a bond and you release the lot and we'll, we'll, uh, take care of the road afterwards. I said, I think what you need to do is you need to start doing some progress on the road. Get some progress going, come into the planning board with a schedule of what, what it looks like you're gonna do for construction to get the road done. And then we could take a look at, you know, what the bond would be. But, but you really need to get some progress going over there because these people really do some kind of work on that road. And then, and I told them, my, my opinion, I'm, I don't speak for the board, but I, I said, I would find it really hard for the board to, to, um, say, oh yeah, go ahead, put the house up. Cause that's, it's totally opposite of what we told all the residents over there all this time.
Amy, do you have a comment?
Um, on that, why cou- why couldn't, um, a written notice from the building department be put out to the bu- builder, buyer, stating that as soon as the road was finished, the building permit would be submitted, um, permitted, uh, they could permit for a building?
I don't, I don't think it makes any difference at this point. That's the, the deal is that there's a covenant on the lot and the town should not release the lot until we get get the road done or get some kind of guarantee with a bond that it will be done. Because we don't want somebody putting up a bond and then the town having to take the bond to finish the road. We want somebody that's gonna go in there and finish the road.
But I think, like, speaking from a realtor's point of view, the deal can't go forward without certain parameters being in writing. So if it would solve a lot of problems if somebody would put in writing that once the road was done, the building permit would be issued.
Well, this, this board could put that in writing, that once the road is done, then the lot would be released. I mean, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't look on putting it on somebody else to write a letter. We're the ones that are holding it up at this point.
I think that the problem, though, from what I understand in the email from the realtor asking about these issues is that they, they're not, it's kind of a catch twenty-two for, for the realtor at this point and the buyer. So some, somebody would need to cure that to be able to move forward. So that would be my suggestion. So that would be what um, I've obtained from other towns when these situations occur. Something assuring the buyer, builder, I don't know if the buyer and the builder are the same. I believe that we do have a realtor on tonight that is part of that deal and I think maybe we should hear, hear from her, but I'm going to guess um, that that would be her main issue with her client.
Uh, just so I'm sure, just so I'm clear on this. Are you saying that to clarify that we're not going to release the lot?
No, that we would release the lot when, when the road's done.
Yeah, so like, um, like that's pretty cut and dry, right? That's plain in all of our paperwork. Like, we could definitely tell them, I guess, but I, I don't see how there's any question or any doubt about that bit of information, especially at this point.
Yeah, no, I was meaning in writing. Let's hear from, I think Mary's here, so we might as well hear from her and we can make sure that my assumption's even exactly correct of what she's gonna ask.
Let, let me just, let me just make a comment. Um, I have also been in touch with, um, the developer. And, uh, we are in the midst of trying to work out the issue with the building department and the covenant. The covenant seems to be an issue for all parties, so we're trying to come up with some sort of an alternative that both the road can be done and that the building permit be issued, potentially being held up, um, with no certificate of occupancy until such time, but we, we're in our initial stages. Um, I will make sure that I do have something at our next meeting, um, from the developer. I'll be more than happy to hear from the real estate agent, um, but that's all I can really say at this point. So, um, I don't know who the real estate agent is. Do you want to identify yourself if you want to speak?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, my name is Mary Baker. So, um, I've just been listening into everything and Amy is, Amy is right in the assumption what I think the concern is, is, and this has nothing to do with anything, but the developer didn't really relay all of this information regarding what was going on with the road and the planning boards. So we've been in contact, contract with them for several months. So from the buyer's point of view, we're just trying to gauge and understand what next steps are, what we can be doing, what is the holdup, what pressure can we be putting on even the developer to make sure that this gets done? Because, um, at this point, it's been six months of really no updates. Uh, no movement, there is no motive, as from what we're seeing, there's no motivation on the builder side or the developer side to get this done. And I don't know if that's because of the road and the covenant and the covenant restriction or them not understanding or if it's just miscommunication. I'm just trying to get a better understanding of what needs to happen in order for this house to be built for my buyers.
So Mary, am I right to say that if you guys had in writing that you would be issued a building permit, it would help your process of getting ready? Because we know that the, um, road can't be done until the, uh, plants open up, right? So as soon as that happens and the road starts and gets done, you just need verification to get moving on a loan process? Is that correct?
Yeah, so I mean, at least we would have some direction in that sense. I don't think that there's a ton of confidence that, um, you know, they, maybe the builder would go through with completing the road. And I think that's probably what Gordon's trying to say in the sense of they don't want to release the lot until they know the road is going to be done. And how do you know until you see forward progression?
Right.
So even with that, even with something written from them, it, it only is as good as the action that's going to be taken behind it. And I know all of us here can't make anybody act. But if there was, I mean, you guys are dealing with this developer a lot more than I am, I guess, and know a lot more than I am. And it does seem as if there, he's trying to make strides in the right direction. But anything that I could get to kind of keep my buyers in the game is, is really what I'm looking for.
Okay, one thing that we would have to be careful about is the verbiage on that. The only verbiage that we could include is that once the road is built, the lot could be released. We would have no standpoint on whether or not a building permit would be issued.
Oh, I wouldn't state that we would say, say that at all, that's why.
All right, cause I was, I'm pretty sure that's how it came up. But like, I just want to clarify that we would only, our interest in this is only in the lot, the road and the release of the lot, not, not the building at all.
Correct. But I'm stating that it would help her out to keep her buyer and then move forward with getting the lot done. And then that way, when the road was finished, the, the road, the, actually the developer, if they had a more concrete buyer, would then maybe have a little bit more edge to get going. It would, it would put a little fire under the developer.
Mm-hmm. And it seems maybe the developer is having conversations that I'm not aware of and that maybe processes or, or plans are in place to, as Alan was saying, kind of work through maybe not getting occupancy until, um, the road was completed. But that's just not information that we have at this point, I guess.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to allow building to occur until the lot was released.
No, that's why I, I'm just concerned about what information you're looking for. We can't say that you'll get a permit and it also seems weird that we would be sending information to the person who owns it that we will not be releasing it until the road's complete because they're already fully aware of that.
I would agree with that.
So who exactly would we be informing of this, which is already written down?
It would just be an affirmation to the buyer, like, yes, you would be able to get a building permit, not.
But we don't, no, no, no.
Not from us.
Hold on. We're not gonna say that they can get a building permit, no matter what.
No, 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 not from us.
Hold on, hold on a second, folks. Let's just, let's stop talking over each other. Okay, Mark, why don't you finish? And then let Amy go. So we're in the middle of whether or not they're gonna issue a building permit and I, it's best in my recollection that we had a previous hearing on this. Amy, you were adamant that the building department was to be notified that the lot could not be released until.
That's not what I'm stating. What I'm, what I'm stating is, is that, what, see, okay, so when you're, so Mary's trying to get her, so the puzzle piece is that the developer will have more urgency to get the road done once April, I think it's April when the plant's open, right? If somebody who has the right to do so, and I'm not saying we would put in writing, I'm saying if the building department would say, yes, this lot would be, we would be able to give a permit on this lot based on these plans when the road is finished, would help Mary's buyer be able to have a little bit more confidence. And then the developer will also have more confidence because they know that they're not gonna be holding on to that lot too long because they know that they can get, because it's like a catch twenty-two. The buyer wants to start things and, and have confidence and stay in the plan of getting there. So if, i- if there could be a letter from the building department stating when the road is released, these plans would be permissible, but not until after that. So like, maybe then Mary's buyer could go into the building department and show them, these are the plans, this is the lot that we're going for and have some sort of an idea that they would be able to go forward with a certain house they wanted to build and that would help the whole entire neighborhood get it all done. Does that make sense, Mary?
Yeah, that makes sense. I think one question that I do have, and it's not, um, it, so it's, it's kind of changing topics a little bit. Um, Gordon had mentioned a bond earlier. So am I right in understanding that even if, even if the developer did put up a bond, we don't feel comfortable going back to the town or going back to the neighborhood and saying, all right, he put up a bond. So he's gonna, we're gonna release the lot, it can be built on. He's gonna have to go further than that. It's, it's gonna be building the lot, or, uh, sorry, um, finishing the road or at least starting construction on the road or finishing the road.
That would be my opinion, is that they'd have to finish the road before building would be allowed only because the other residents on the road have been in here for years trying to get this road finished.
Okay.
So if a house all of a sudden went up, then it's, they're gonna be up in arms.
Yeah, and the fear is that he's going to leave before, even if he has a bond.
Yes.
He's not gonna honor that, he's gonna go a separate way and then the town's gonna be left responsible to pay for it.
Exactly.
Okay.
The bond would be there, but then the town would have to finish the road and that's not, that's all right.
All right, is there any, any other citizens want to comment? Okay, I, I just want to add that the, um, I, I will make sure that we do have some sort of an update for the next meeting. I've heard everybody's thoughts. Uh, I don't a hundred percent agree with, I think the, uh, this planning board has certain parameters to follow. Unfortunately, we have to follow them. And I think that, uh, with some negotiations, that hopefully we can come up with a plan, whether it be a bond or whatever, that we can accomplish both getting the road done and getting that property built on. It's, it's, it's my belief that it's been substantial on a progress with perk tests and, um, I, I would assume that some plans went into the building department because those, I, I was told that the bill inspector could not issue permits based on the covenant. So, um, I will make sure that I do have something very substantial for our next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on Pastor Lane? Hearing none. Uh, Complete Streets, we'll stay with our discussion. Complete Streets program, that information was sent to the, um, Complete Streets program, that information was sent to the order selectmen. I'm going to skip over Clutch Tree for this one minute. I'm going to go back up the unfinished business. I hope everybody got the opportunity to, to read the email correspondence between myself and Don Bracken regarding Clutch Tree. That was on the 15th. On the 19th, there was an email communication between myself and Casey Birch. And I believe that was in relative to the, the damage that was done when they went out for the site inspection because some signs and stuff were, were torn down. But that issue has been resolved. There was notices from last week, or last meeting, from different boards and committees. I'm assuming everybody got a chance to, to review those. Those are basically just decisions and some public hearing notices. Want to skip down, either do meeting minutes, or maybe we should just handle all the correspondence now. It's, and it's very lengthy. As of last week, we had, you know, it was 22 emails, and I'm sure there's been 22 more. And so I'm just going to touch briefly on some of them. On 119 and 125 from this William McNeese, which we have no idea what he's doing there. There were some emails regarding 311 Plummer Street on an extension. There was a letter from Charlie Sealy regarding the decision-making process. There was a submission, looks like on the 25th and the 28th regarding Bud's Goods. There was an email from Mary Baker, which we just heard from here on the One Pasture Lane. And then there was an email regarding the withdrawal without prejudice for the Eight Hill Lane. So I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joanne, they've withdrawn everything. They withdrew the application for the subdivision modification, and they withdrew the multiple family project, which was, which this would have been that site plan for the multiple family. So am I correct? They withdrawn everything?
You're correct, yes.
So there's nothing else on the table for Hill Lane at this point. 127.
So you, I'm sorry, you just need to, you need to accept that withdrawal.
Uh, we need a motion for that, or we need to sign it?
We need to sign it.
Okay, I did sign it.
I can stamp it if you don't want to come in and sign it.
So why, why do this? I'm just going to ask for a motion for who wants to sign it, or we're going to allow Joanne to stamp it? Anybody got their, I did sign it already.
I'll make a motion to allow Joanne to stamp.
I'll go in and sign it.
Okay, so wait a minute. Hold on, I got a, I got a motion to have Joanne stamp it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Gordon, seconds, I'm going to go roll call. Gordon?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Amy?
Uh, I'm going to go in and sign it.
Is that, is that a yes, or you want to stand or no?
I'm going to say no for me.
Okay, Mark?
Yes.
Yes, Alan, yes. Joanne, that's going to be four in favor, one no. We need one more signature. There's two on there now. Do you need three, or do you need all five, Joanne?
All of them.
All of them.
I need all of them.
Okay, so Mark is going to stamp. I signed it, Rick signed it, Gordon, what's your pleasure?
Stamp.
Stamp.
And Amy wants to sign it?
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Joanne.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Next item is Mike Devani. These are the punch lists, which we've already dealt with that. And there's another email from Pat Brennan regarding the punch list. And then there's an email from Pat Brennan regarding the review status estimates. We also had in this week's, on this week's agenda, some notices from Abudding Towns and public hearing notices. Anybody need to discuss any of that?
In this week's?
Yeah, this week's, it was some from Pembroke. East Bridgewater. Pembroke and East Bridgewater, I didn't see anything else.
I only saw Bridgewater and Halifax.
You saw something from?
Bridgewater and Halifax.
Okay, I must have missed the Halifax. Which one was that on?
It's a zoning mode of appeals on 596 Mont Pontet Street.
That was a, that's a public hearing notice, no decision.
No, I know, I thought those are the notices that I saw in here.
Yeah, she's got them on the same line, the public hearing notices and then the decision. So yeah, I did see that. I didn't see, they haven't, I think they're going to act on that on the 8th. There's a board, have any comments? I mean, it's, I don't really think so.
I don't, I don't see those, that's what I was looking for.
Uh, 596.
48.
Is the old.
47.
Hold on a second, Amy. Gordon, that's the old theater. They want to razz that and put a two or three bedroom, single-family house.
And the exact footprint, correct?
Uh, that I don't know. I don't know if that public hearing notice is in a package. If, I know we got it on email.
It is, it's page 38. Sorry, 48.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm pretty sure that he owns the lots all the way over to C Mac. So one of those lot lines is a little off.
Yeah, well, we have a public hearing notice. If anybody has got any concerns, I can go in there on an individual basis. But there's, you know, we get the notice only because it's required. There's really no action, I don't believe, that this board needs to take. But if you do have, if anybody has an issue, then I think that they should probably be heard at that February 8th hearing. All right, what did I miss? Okay, we can either start with Clutch Tree, or we can get into meeting minutes.
We can do meeting minutes first?
Yeah, let's do the meeting minutes, okay. We have November 5th meeting minutes, page. I think we've got two sets of meeting minutes here.
I believe it's 31.
31.
Yep.
We do. We have some regular meeting minutes, and then we have an amended version. So. What's the, I'm looking for some sort of motion on these minutes.
A motion to accept the amended by Amy minutes from November 5th, 2020.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion in the second. Do we have any discussion? Anybody want to comment? I, I don't know exactly what the difference is. It was supposed to have been highlighted, but obviously they might have been highlighted at some point, but it's gone in the, so we have a motion in the second. I'll go to a roll call vote. Gordon?
Yes.
Rick?
No.
Amy?
Yes.
Alan? Oh, excuse me, Mark?
Yes.
Alan, no. So record that. We have three to two on accepting Amy's minutes. Now we're going to go, the next item is we have the regular planning board meeting, since we have two. So I'm going to be looking for a motion as to what we're going to do with the November 5th meeting minutes that Joanne created. Does anybody want to make a motion? Accept or reject, or?
I'm making a motion, I accept them. I was fine with those.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll fucking it.
Okay, Amy's going to second. So we, we have two sets of meeting minutes.
No, not on November 19th, no.
November 5th.
We already did that.
No, we're still on the November 5th.
But hold on, are we, are we now, where we already voted to approve the minutes? Are we approving two sets at this point?
That's my question. We have, we have.
Like, I'm pretty sure that the motion, I'm, hold on, hold on. I'm pretty sure we've already made a motion and accepted the minutes. I don't understand why we would be accepting another set where we've already approved the minutes.
That was for November 5th. But so now, now you're on to the next, to the next set.
We're on the next set.
November 19th, there's only one set. There was just mine, there wasn't an amended version.
Okay, just making sure that we've, we're all set with November 5th. It's done, it's approved.
Right, you're approving.
No, that's not the case.
I, I don't understand that because there was a motion, it was seconded, and then it passed with a three to two vote.
Correct. That's, that's on the first set of minutes.
No, there is no first and second set. That is the official set that we have voted on as a board.
Okay, if, if, if that's the board's pleasure.
That is exactly what we did.
Okay.
Certainly.
Is everybody fine with that? We're gonna, what are we going to do with Joanne's minutes? We're not going to include those.
They were amended.
They've been amended and approved.
Okay, so let's go to the November 19th minutes.
And this is the one that I was thinking we were making a second on, so that's, that's for the record.
Okay, so do I have?
To approve the November 19th meeting minutes?
I'll make a second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. We'll go to a roll call. Gordon?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Amy?
Yep.
Mark?
Yes.
Alan, yes. So those meeting for November 19th minutes have been approved. We have meeting minutes for December 3rd. You know, one thing I need to clarify. Do you folks want to sign these meeting minutes, or are we going to stamp them?
I'm always going to sign.
I'm fine with stamping.
I'd prefer to stamp at least for the foreseeable future.
Okay, Rick, you want to stamp?
Yeah, I can stamp.
Okay, and, and you can stamp mine also. Amy, you're going to have to go in, just make sure that we, we get this.
I have notes.
Very quick. Okay, so now we're on a December 3rd. So that's going to apply for both the November 5th and November 19 minutes. They're going to be stamped by Joanne.
Make a motion to accept the December 3rd minutes?
We have a second? We have a motion? Okay, Rick, seconds, going to go to a roll call. Gordon?
I have discussion.
Okay, okay, we're going to discussion.
In the meeting minutes on the third page, about halfway down, I have a question about the October 15th, 2020 meeting minutes, which I sent in an email showing that the email, the, the October 15th, 2020 minutes that were laid out on the table to be signed were not the same ones that we approved in our meeting. And I have not gotten an answer on that yet. So there shouldn't be any full signature of that, and it just got swept under. And I'm bringing it up as it was, and so maybe we'll put it on our next agenda to talk about that because that's why I will not let anybody use my stamp because it was not the correct set of minutes. And I would like to know why my email was not answered as well.
Okay, so everything other than, everything else is fine. And Joanne, please note that we're going to, first of all, was the October 15th minutes okayed? But you're saying they were okayed, but they weren't correct?
The ones that were on the table. I, I compared them with the ones that we approved at the meeting, and they were not the same.
Okay.
Those were approved. They were.
The ones on the table to be signed were not the same, and I.
They were, you were confused about which set they were. They were, they were the ones that were approved.
See, I was the one who made the adjustment, and I had the written adjustment, and the written, and the minutes that were on the table were not that. I'll come in when, you know what, Joanne? I'll come into the office and I'll show you.
Okay.
Oh, I'm not there, but.
Yes, okay, so we, we have a motion in a second. And I think that if, if there's a difference in the meeting minutes, we can add that to our next agenda to go over whatever they are, whatever issues there is. So we have a motion in a second, we had a discussion. Any other discussion? Then I'll move to a vote. Gordon? This is to approve December 3rd.
Yes.
Minutes. Rick?
Yes.
Amy? Was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, Mark?
I, I wasn't there, I won't be voting on this one.
Okay, Alan, yes. So we're going to have 401, Mark abstaining.
Okay, you're all set.
All right. Now with all this paperwork, I'm going to find my agenda. Joanne, you have too many papers here. Why did I lose my agenda? Here it is, I'm sorry.
Page one is the agenda.
Go ahead, go ahead, Joanne.
No, I was just telling you that page one was the agenda. I was just kidding.
What did we miss, folks? We've got all of our meeting minutes, we've got all our emails. Is there anything that we missed? I didn't check anything off. Before we go, we're going to go into just quickly on the ZBA comprehensive permits. I've asked members of the board if they have any personal input, having heard none. Please, if there is any issues, if anybody's looked at the plan or heard the hearings. We can either make.
What are we talking about here?
We're talking about the 40B project, Country Club Estates. Although, as a planning board, we, we don't have a nickel in that quarter. It would be nice for us to at least make some comments on the drainage, which I, I have on a personal basis. But you might want to take a look at that plan and see if anybody's got any additional comments or concerns so we can put the ZBA on notice.
Does ZBA have any questions for the planning board as to what they would like an input on?
I'm going to say no. I have not, we haven't got any official requests.
Okay.
So again, I'll ask if anybody's got any comments, share them with Joanne, and I'll bring that to, to their attention on that, that meeting. Okay, I think the last item on our agenda is going to be Clutch Tree. This is on a non-compliance issue. We discussed this last week, and then we abruptly had to adjourn because we lost one of our members. Mark, just to bring you up to date, I don't know if you've read the.
Alan?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to recuse myself, and I'd like it marked down.
Okay, Joanne, 827, Gordon recuses himself. Are you staying on, Gordon, or you're going to just, you're, you're leaving us?
Are we all, we all done after that?
Um, I believe so. I think we've covered. Did our minutes, I, I believe so.
That's most likely it.
Yeah, I think that's it. That is it.
Okay.
Mark, I don't, did you have a chance to go through the massive amount of emails regarding Clutch Tree and the issue on the non-compliance?
So I, I looked through a lot of the paperwork. I didn't read all of the emails, but I saw the, some of the notes, even from the, the fire department, some of the stuff with the pictures going back and seeing what it was. Looks like back in like 18 or 19 to what it is now.
Okay, the, the issue that we had, it's been determined that the plan that Clutch submitted to all the boards was a plan that was mocked up by some other individual, at least based on his, his comments. He took a plan from Bracken Engineering, they mocked it up without Bracken's knowledge, submitted it to the planning board. That's probably the biggest issue. To me, that means he's in non-compliance. We discussed this, trying to determine what, what do we do at this point? When I reviewed some of the meeting minutes, I believe he was supposed to come back, Clutch Tree was supposed to come back in July of either 19 or July of 20 to review that site plan, and that never happened. So. I guess.
So is the question on the legitimacy of the site plan that was approved? Is the question on the legitimacy of the site plan that was approved?
There's no question that the plan that was approved was not a legitimate plan, not prepared by an engineer.
Okay.
That's been substantiated both by the engineer and the, um, and Clutch Tree. So at this point.
I'm ju- just, just clear, but it was, it was proposed as if it was.
The plan was submitted as if.
It was prepared by Bracken Engineering?
Yes.
Okay. Just saying, because it didn't necessarily have to be, but if they claimed that it was, that's different.
Yeah, they, the, the plan shows, uh, a land surveyor stamp, and it shows bracket engineering stamp.
Okay.
Well, we couldn't have accepted it, or the planning board at that point couldn't have accepted it, um, because of the the fact that it didn't have an engineered stamp or surveyor stamp. That, that's part of our regulations. So, I mean, that's been established. Uh, Clutch is working with the fire department to try to get it into compliance. I believe the date on that is, um, March. I think he's got till March, uh, early part of March to come in, let me see. March tenth to, uh, bring it into compliance, if you read that. And, and it's my suggestion that this board adopt the same policy to, um, allow him to continue, but to be prepared to come in prior to that or on that date with a new certified site plan, so that we can start from, I guess, the beginning, because the other plans aren't any good. I don't know that we really need to take any physical action. Uh, I would hope that the board would to send him out a notice that, you know, he needs to bring everything into compliance. And we'll give him whatever time necessary to get it into compliance, but we do need to have a plan, some sort of legitimate plan to know what's going on there. Rick, you were in on the conversation. Did I miss anything?
No. No, it seems like that's all.
Uh, Amy, you were in there, and you, you dropped off. You, you had some concerns. You still have some concerns based on the emails that you read?
Um, I did miss some of the informal conversation that you guys had, um, obviously because my computer shut down last time. That was awful. Um, however, um, I think that my question now would be, is, um, the site plan, which one are we talking about? Because I believe last year, we, um, approved a site plan with a building, so we're not talking about that one. Is that correct?
You're gonna have to, you're gonna have to use your recollection. I was not part of that process.
Okay, Mark, do you remember last year's? Well, wait a minute, because you remember there's two site plans, and one was approved last year. Do you recall that, Mark?
Yeah, yeah, not exactly the details, but I definitely remember that there was something they came in and they were talking about putting a building there that was not originally proposed.
Correct. Was that the site plan that you were discussing, Alan?
Yes, all, everything that.
It was with a building on it and everything, and a septic system, that's the, that's the, that is actually the one, like, because in, in the one that I'm talking about, there's a sidewalk, there's parking, there's a building with, it has septic system, there's drainage. Was, was that the site plan that you're saying was, um, fraudulent?
I can tell you that.
Well, I'd need to know which plan you're talking about to make a clear decision.
About the plan that was submitted to the planning board that had markings drawn on it, not by an engineer. I believe the original plan that you are, the original proposed plan that you're talking about, uh, I don't know that that was submitted to the planning board. I do know that that was submitted to the, to the Board of Health. I do recall seeing that plan. I think that plan was okay, but I would need, I've seen so many plans, I would need to look at that plan to be sure. I can tell you that the plans that I saw that, that I sent to the engineer were, uh, were mocked up. Um, I don't have the date, and I don't have the file, and Joanne, you wouldn't have, um, I, I know I sent that in an email attachment, and it might be a particular plan date, but and I don't know that Joanne has that information available, but.
You were talking about the drawing?
Yeah, the one with the drawings. Quite honestly, Mr. Clutch, or whatever his name is, he admitted that, he admitted that he had somebody mark the plans up. So, to me, any plan that's out there is gonna be suspect unless we have a stamp that's got a, got a, uh, plan that's got a wet stamp. So.
Wait a minute, so there's, if, if, I think that the, the plan that you're talking about was, um, Fiore put in, um, some information on that plan to help Clutch in order for him to be able to buy it. I don't think that they presented it, that Bracken did those, um, written parts, and here's why. Anybody on the board would know that print on a document wouldn't be done by an engineer. It would be printed and clean and clear and crisp. It wouldn't have red line showing a waterline or trees or whatever have you. Because I think that I've seen plans and off, being on the planning board, being in real estate, selling subdivisions, things like that, and, and on those plans, there isn't red markings and such like that. But when there are, we know that an engineer didn't do them, so I don't think that Fiore presented that to the planning board saying that Bracken did those. So, just to be clear, because I think that the problem here is before Clutch Tree bought this, from my understanding from all these emails, is that Fiore presented it in order to allow Bracken the surety of he would be able to do the things that he was going to need to do on the property before he bought it, and that's how it occurred.
Okay.
Yeah, which actually makes a, that's a big difference right there, too, because if someone had updated a pre-existing plan for us, to show us, we certainly could have approved that without it being an engineered plan.
We have a plan or sets of plans, whether Fiore did it or, or Clutch did it. The, the name on the plan is the A5 LLC that Clutch holds the property in. So, w- we can go back and hash who did what, and I don't really think that's, that's an issue. If, if that's an issue that the board of professional licenser can handle if they receive a complaint. We just need to figure out how we can get the property into compliance now. Let's move forward, give him whatever time he needs, if he's gonna put a building up, put his logs in the right position, put his, uh, equipment in the right position. We just need to get that behind us, all right, and let's move forward. I, I don't agree a hundred percent with what Amy said, only because I've looked at all the plans, and I've seen that it's pretty much this eighty-five LLC. That didn't change, so, but, ha- having said that, uh, does the board want to take any action to give Mr. Clutch the same amount of time the fire department did to, uh, present us with a site plan and to get into compliance?
All right, so wh- what exactly are the infractions that we're dealing with right now? Because I saw a thing about a fire. So are you, are you suggesting that we request an updated site plan?
I, I think we need to, to request a site plan. The update, the, the site plan that's there.
An existing conditions site plan?
Well.
Is that what you're looking, that's, that's what I'm, are you asking for an existing conditions plan?
No, no. Existing condition plan would kind of be a, a waste of money for him, because he's indicated through other boards that he wants to put a building up. So, to have an engineer go out and, and locate all the log piles and trucks and equipment, to do an existing conditions plan is really immaterial. We want to know what, what I would want to know is exactly where he's gonna locate the building. Is he gonna do the parking as he proposed?
But we don't have, we, we don't have the right to ask him if he's not proposing it, right? We, like, we just, we can't just say, hey, in ten years, if you're gonna put a plant, you know, if you want a building, you have to show us now what it's gonna be? If he's not proposing a building, then why would we ask him where it's going?
He is proposing a building.
Okay, so he's presenting us with a plan, because I have not seen any of that.
Yes, he is proposing a building.
So why do we have to ask him to present, if he's coming in with a proposal for the building, he's gonna have to provide us with that?
But he's not coming in.
Yeah, so he's not proposing anything. If he was proposing something, dude, you're kinda talking in circles here.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying.
Proposing something, he'd be bringing us a plan.
Correct.
If he's not, then we're not gonna ask him for a plan.
Okay, so how do we get whether or not we know that the original plans that were submitted are, are not correct? He's got a site plan. There are items, there are some of the activities he does have as a matter of right. So, as a matter of right, I would still think he'd need a site plan, those other.
Are you saying he's in violation of his site plan? Are you saying that?
Yes.
Okay, that's different.
Okay.
So you're claiming he's in violation. Now, we have to prove that.
Okay.
Right? So are you going to ask him for an existing conditions plan so we can prove that he's incorrect, or do you have any proof, and if so, then we move forward with that? So what exactly is the infraction that you are aware of?
So, do you, would you prefer to get an existing conditions plan?
No, I'd prefer you to answer the question, so I have enough information to go further.
Okay, so go ahead. Give me the question again, Mark.
Is, what is the infraction that you are aware of?
The.
What is the violation of his site plan?
The storage of logs? The storage of wood chips? The equipment, I, I believe it's some sort of a grinder, um.
And, and you're saying that his site plan does not allow him to store logs on the property?
The site plan itself.
Yeah.
Well, let me put it this way. Chapter thirty-one of the Fire Code allows logs to be stored in a certain position. None of that is in compliance.
And none of that is up to the planning board?
It would be, because on the site plan, he'd show the storage of those facilities, and then if there's any violations from there, then of course it goes to the fire department.
Okay, so therefore, it's not a planning board issue.
It is.
We don't control stacking wood. If we gave him a part, you see where I'm getting at? You keep telling us that he's, you, you gotta prove to me that he's done something wrong here.
What I think maybe to do is just go on and take a look at the site.
Okay.
If you look at the site and stop by the office and look at the plans that are there, um.
So I would have to do that. You can't tell me that. Is, is, you see where I'm suspicious here?
Yeah, no, what I'm saying.
I've asked you kinda straightforward, what was the thing, and you came up with storing logs and having equipment, which are both things that are probably on the original site plan, because that was what the intent for the property was.
Um, you could be correct, because I was not part of the process. I'm just looking over the plans as that were submitted. And I can only go over some of the meeting minutes that were there when, when this board gave him permission to do certain things and not cut wood, so I can only go by that, but you'd be, I'd be more than happy to have you go out there and take a look, and to get a copy of the plan, and we'll provide you a copy of the plan if you want, and see if we're in any ways near compliance. My goal is to get him into compliance or somewhere near, give him whatever time he needs to get into compliance, and, and it should be somewhere in the guidelines of where the fire chief is.
Okay, so would you like, I, I would make a motion to send a letter that we would like him to come within compliance by the same date, which I believe you said was in March.
Yes.
We can just inform him that we would like him to come within compliance within that time.
Okay.
That would be my motion to, to let him know.
For what? But what was?
My, my motion is just to make, make sure that he is in compliance by that date in March.
So, the fire department already has that out on him. And it's due to that, so I don't really think we need to double up.
Okay, so.
Oh, that's fine. You, like, my motion is still there, like, we can.
Yeah, hold on.
We don't have to pass it, but.
Mark, just, just hold on a second. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna get a second, and if, if we wanna go into a discussion, we can. Um, do I have a second on Mark's motion? To, uh. Okay, now, do we have any discussion? Amy, did you want to discuss this any further?
No, I wanted to know what the infraction was, because I agree with Mark. Like, if you're gonna tell me there's an infraction, then that's what we should handle. Otherwise, we could be overstepping our bounds here.
Well, that's why I think it's great, because if we just write a letter that says he has to be in compliance, and he already is, then he doesn't have to do anything.
Correct, okay. So, so point well taken. We have a motion in the second. We've had some discussion. I'm gonna go to a vote. Rick?
Yes.
Amy?
Nope.
Uh, Mark?
Yes.
Alan, yes. So Joanne, you'll send that letter out. The date is gonna be three ten twenty-one to whatever Mark's motion was, to bring him into compliance. All right, is there any other business the planning board has that I might have missed?
You might have missed Amy's mission. Yeah, there you go.
What'd we say?
Amy had a great motion to adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion in a second. I'm going to a roll call. I'm gonna start with Rick.
Yep.
Amy?
Yep.
Mark?
Yes.
Alan, yes. Thank you, folks, um, and good night.